Welcome, I got the sign that we're about to begin. Just for a note, Kevin won't be able to make his meeting. He had a couple of health issues he was dealing with today and won't be available. Kelly, could you lead us in the Pledge of Leaden? You're a school teacher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So the first order of business is to call a public hearing for the comprehensive plan. And Allison Gadway is, Gaddy? Gaddy is here to give us an update. She had previously given an update to the board, and these are the changes that have taken place.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, I'm Allison Gaddy from the Lake Champlain Lake George Regional Planning Board, and we were happy to be part of the planning team for this process. I'm joined today by my colleague Sam Blake. As we mentioned, this is our second public hearing. Our first public hearing was held on April 2nd, and since then, the Comprehensive Plan Committee has met, worked to incorporate what we heard from that meeting into the document, and we're here to kind of discuss how we did that and where we are. This will be slightly repetitive for those who were at the April 2nd hearing, but I just kind of want to go over the whole planning process, how we incorporated public input in throughout the entire planning process. So, just the rudimentary facts of what is a comprehensive plan? It is our long-range guidance document that sets goals and priorities for investments in the physical, economic, and environmental future of the town. Comprehensive plans are not zoning, they do not change ordinances, they do not directly impact, they do not directly change land use within the town. It just does provide guidance for these future decisions. The comprehensive plan is rooted in data and shaped by public engagement, and it's anchored by a unified community vision that we developed out of public comment. We did an inventory analysis of the existing conditions. This helped us, along with the planning committee, identify opportunities and challenges, and we were able to describe, articulate a vision for the community's future. And kind of, and sometimes, most importantly, having an updated comprehensive plan improves your community's chances of receiving grants. When you have an updated comprehensive plan that lists out your community's priorities and priority projects, that can be used to gain greater points when rated by New York State entities. A comprehensive plan is meant to be a living document. It's meant to be updated to reflect the current issues in your town and the greater region. Johnsburg's last comprehensive plan was adopted in 2005, so we're 20 years old in the adoption, probably a little bit longer on the engagement and the information that was included in that document. So, this was a really opportune time to do this new plan we did here. So, we went through the planning process. A little over two years ago, we started this process with our first meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Since then, we had four, we held four public workshops, conducted one community survey, and like I said, this is our second public hearing. We had a project website, and throughout that time, we met with our Comprehensive Plan Committee. Those are members of your community who helped guide us and make sure we were on the right track. They helped us with some ground truthing, if you will, to make sure what we were hearing was what was really going on in the community. So, some key points, what we learned, the cost of living, or the cost of housing is affecting people's ability to stay, to live and stay in Johnsburg, even if they want to. This includes, this, we also heard this in some conversations we had with high school seniors. So, you know, it's hitting all demographic areas of this community. The town's recreational assets are a point of pride for this community, and many feel that's what makes Johnsburg a special place to live. Services are needed to support young and aging residents alike. Oftentimes, these overlap with each other, so this is, it's a great opportunity. Future growth and development should be concentrated in and around hamlet areas, and there is a general optimism for the future of this town amongst the community. So, that was really wonderful to see. So, working together with the committee and with information we gather from the public, a future, a vision statement was developed, and this is sort of the guiding statement for the plan, and it's meant to reflect what the community aspires to be 10 years down the road. So, it's, the vision statement was, "In 2035, the town of Johnsburg will be a supportive community," I don't know how I got back to her, "for people of all ages with diverse housing opportunities and a robust, broad-based economy that balances growth with the stewardship of natural resources. The town will welcome and embrace new residents and visitors while meeting the needs of existing residents and workforce." Each of our six hamlets has a unique identity and is connected to the others through a shared sense of history and community pride. And, in the plan, there are 13 main goals, and they are categorized into four primary issues. That's housing, economy, community facilities, and land use. Let's see. And in addition to those themes, we also, or those issues, we also had some supporting themes that kind of connected all of our goals and recommendations, and it just, they were interspersed throughout these themes, so we wanted to pull them out and make sure that they were identified too, because they really seemed to be important things for the town. So, that was, these were things like supporting the town's aging population, promoting universal accessibility and inclusive design, some business support and workforce training, infrastructure to drive economic development and housing opportunities, attracting new residents, and enhancing the town's natural resources and environmental assets. Let's see. And a comprehensive plan is set up, like the vision, it's that guiding statement, it's very broad, aspirational for 10 years down the road, and then we go a little bit more defined to identify goals. And as I said, there were 13 goals among those four issues, but then we get even more pointed, implementable projects and programs, and these are what we call our strategies or recommendations, and there were about 100 of those identified in the plan. And those are your like little achievable programs that can be done, so you can really mark your progress and really work to achieve those goals and vision. And like I said, this is a living document, so the comprehensive plan is dynamic and should adapt to your community's goals. So, that being said, it should be updated every five to 10 years. But, we, the Comprehensive Plan Committee and the public felt that this was an important thing to really kind of look at on an annual basis, just not a full, not a full update, but just make sure you're still hitting some of the priorities of the community and that, you know, you can, and when you address those every annually, you can remove things that might not be relevant anymore and add other things that might be. This is also a really great time to celebrate your achievements, check off what you've done. So, to do this, there was sort of a major recommendation to ensure implementation was to create a standing comprehensive plan committee that might report back to the board, identify projects that to be implemented that year, things that you might want to go after grant funding for. So, this would be a representative group of the committee that could lead this process. So, as I said, on April 2nd, we held our first public hearing. There are about 14 community members present, and we heard some really, really great feedback. There was, there were things like, let's see, a discussion of community values, the importance of keeping the community affordable. There were some, we wanted to address short-term rentals with maybe some different language, elaborate on how the town can support small businesses, include the culture of volunteerism as a, and the positive aspects your senior community brings to this town. So, we did that by adding, you know, this really important cultural volunteerism that you have in your community that is often led by seniors because of their, you know, time, yes. So, that was added there on page seven. On page 38, we adjusted the narrative to expand the economic benefits of art, the arts and cultural resources for the town, and sort of the complementary nature of recreation and arts. We updated the narrative on page 29, related to language used around short-term rentals, and also ensured that we, you know, talk about that there is a benefit to having second homeowners with the acknowledgement that there are, there is a balance between how it can impact housing prices, well, short-term rentals and housing prices. We clarified, we received comments back from the Adirondack Park Agency and clarified some language related to APA and zoning, and that's, you can see that throughout the document. We added a narrative for yearly reviews and budgeting for implementation, and that would be some coordination between that implementation committee and the town board. And Strategy 8.4 was about creating an arts district, and we just expanded it to include Main Street businesses and other culturally-related activities, and that was updated throughout the document. And just before I open for a public comment, I wanted to speak to the board about sort of the next steps. There are a few procedural things that need to go on to adopt this plan. We have received, in your packet, you'll see, we have received a referral from Warren County Planning Department. They've approved this plan for adoption. Let's see, Seeker will need to be completed. In your packet, you'll see, I've completed the full environmental assessment form. Part one is complete. The board will do part two together when you choose to adopt. And then, because it is a Type 1 action, following this, following any public comments we hear tonight, we will finalize the plan, incorporate any changes that need to occur. And in a couple of weeks, the town board will adopt the comprehensive plan, but there's a draft resolution included in your packet. Procedurally, are there, do you have any questions? Yeah, you read, but it, no. So, there's like a, because it's a full environmental impact or assessment form, there's like questions you need to answer, and the answers are little to no impact or moderate to great impact, and that's like the balancing portion of Seeker. If anything, is a yes. Any mitigating actions need to be identified before you can declare a negative declaration.
And we can do that prior to May 20th?
Yeah, you can do it all at the same time. Yep. I would say that that would be fine. All right. So, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment at this time, please, how would you do it? How would you like to do it?
They come right down to where you are.
Okay, great. Please come on down.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, overall, I'm very supportive of the comprehensive plan, the goals and strategies. They're so important to our future of our community. But my comments tonight relate to arts and culture, and how those two things impacts economic development and quality of life here in the town of Johnsburg. I agree with the public comments made on April 2nd about the arts having a large overlap with many of the goals in the plan, specifically, Goals 4, 8, and 12 can all be supported by investing in the arts, and the arts have a direct and indirect impacts on local economy and quality of life, retaining current residents and attracting new residents, as well as businesses and tourists. Under Community Goals on page 2, I'd like to recommend, under Economy, number 17, change to harness the benefits of the recreation and add culture and tourism economy, the term "culture" there. And on page 26, it states, "Add, attract new residents." I would add to that, retain current residents as well, because I believe arts and culture can help with that in quality of life, and I know that everyone is, feels very important, feels that it's important that the, ensure the arts and culture is within everyone's Goal 8.4 on page 38, just want to mention that the Tannery Pond is ready to organize a working group to launch or begin to organize the North Creek Arts District. And I would just finally say that an arts district supports the Strategy 12.4 on page 44, where it states, "Encouraging businesses that add to the vitality of hamlet centers by providing cultural, recreation, and entertainment amenities desired by community and visitors." That's extended my comments. Thank you.
Kelly Nessel. I served on the planning committee, and I was very pleased with the process. It was amazing to go through, how you take all these big ideas and then come down to the end result. It was quite an experience. I think that what we have here is an excellent document. I think it is, as she says, a living document and something that will change as we go along. And the recommendation to have a planning committee or somebody who works with this plan, not somebody, but some buddies that work with this plan, makes a lot of sense to me, because it's hard for individual board members and the supervisor to do that as well as all the rest of the town business. It's just, plan after plan after plan. We've probably had about eight plans since 1990, and they all sit right there on the shelf or in the town hall. Now, that doesn't mean things haven't gotten done, because I've gone through that original one, the North Country Action Plan, North Creek Action Plan from '91 or something like that, and actually say, "Oh, look, we've done that. Oh, yeah, we've done that." Or, you know, not "we," but somebody has done that. So, you can, we can check things off, but it's not done in really a concerted effort. So, I think that this plan committee is extremely important, and one of the jobs, in my mind anyway, that you have the committee, but then you go beyond just as a small committee. You reach out and say, "Okay, who's interested in arts? Who's interested in economic development?" And get people from the town who may be interested and/or bring expertise in that field, and they sit, and they meet, so that you have basically another subcommittee. And that information, or whatever they come up with, gets taken to the community at large, gets taken to the town board. I mean, I see it as a process, but it's going to involve, if we want to get any of this stuff done, it's going to involve a lot of people who are interested in making things happen, and, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Hi, my name is Judy Walton. I'm from Johnsburg, and I apologize, I have a bit of laryngitis, but happily, we have a mic which will help with that. First of all, I just wanted to say to the committee that put this together, an amazing process, and, I mean, you know, so many times of coming back to the public, you know, this is democracy, you know, at really the base level, and we're very lucky to have it by, you know, having a relatively small town that we're working with. I love the part about recognizing both, you know, the recreational and cultural aspects, and not just aspects, but, you know, the high points of this community and building on them, and it's a perfect time with the expansion going on in Gore. I mean, this is, you know, a time to really move on this, on this plan. North Creek is an arts district, yay. Having spent time in New York City, I've seen various communities that were arts, you know, became arts areas, and my God, they blossomed. And eventually, you know, sometimes those artists had to move somewhere else because, you know, there was so much interest in those areas, and so, I think that is a big plus. I love the idea of enhancing the youth programming, because we need our young people to stay here and build the community going forward, and we need to show them there are jobs here, and we need to, you know, help them locate jobs, and I'm really interested in helping with that. Also, addressing our need for more housing, we really have to do that, and I mean, that's an international problem, but, you know, we're really seeing it right here at the local level. Daycare, you know, if we want young families, we have to have daycare. And senior services, because as you mentioned, yes, we seniors have a lot more time to do volunteering and even read, you know, 80-page comprehensive plans. The, oh, the Liaison Committee between Orda and the town, I just think that's so important, given the history, you know, of not, not a great communication. I would love to serve on that committee. Oh, I've always felt we needed, you know, even with this ski bowl coming in or rather being developed, you know, it's still across 28, and we need to figure out how to get those people in town. My husband has a friend who has been skiing Gore for like 20 years, and they got together, he came into town, he's from Syracuse, and, you know, after 20 years, my husband took him down, they had drinks in town, and the guy said, "I can't believe, this is great. I've never been here." And I'm like, "Okay, we need to do something about that." So, let's build a gondola from town, you know, up to the ski bowl. Let's see. Oh, and better signage. I love the notion of the gateway signage. And yes, you know, that Tannery Corner lot would make a great, great place welcoming A lot of this is going to require new investment, but our challenge was going to be, we'll be, you know, tapping all sorts of new funding sources, not just our local taxpayers, and so I love the idea that by having a new, by having a comprehensive plan, we become much more eligible for, say, state grants, even grants from, you know, well, granting organizations. So, oh, and the Implementation Committee. I love that idea. We know how long-term plans often get shelved immediately, and so, having, having somebody, you know, just every now and then reviewing and updating, I think that's a great idea. So, anyway, congratulations on doing a great job, and I hope that the town board will see the value of this plan and that we, as a community, you know, will make sure it happens. So, thank you.
I forgot something. Can you imagine that? The implementation of this plan. I wondered, and I don't know, maybe Allison or Sam could help me with this, but I do think, I think there are grants out there to hire people who are trained in helping implementation committees, you know? In other words, we get our committees going, and we have somebody who has more expertise than us to move things forward, and I think that that would probably be very useful. Am I wrong, Allison, or are there?
Move things forward in what way?
Yes, apply for grants and, you know, sort of guide, you know?
It's very hard to say for acquisition of grants, but for our organization, in vision to working on grants, we do write grants.
Yeah.
To our community, you know, and then help them administer them, and so we could, we could work with you on that.
Yeah.
Or possibly application.
I'd say that came up with the, with the Community Development Corporation, talking about as we look at this in the New York Forward, that we would want to have a grant writer help us with that.
Right.
It would definitely make more sense than us doing the grant writing ourselves.
Right. Yes, okay. I just wanted to point that out.
Go with the professionals.
Anyone else like to comment on the comprehensive plan? Going once, going twice. We will close the public hearing on the comprehensive plan.
So, we will incorporate the comments here to the community, and they will send it back to proposals on what the family was saying, and we will review on the public.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just bump it.
We'll pop her in.
So, we'll open the town board meeting. There's a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan that we're going to address at our next town board meeting. We still have to do the environmental impact, so that will go to the next town board meeting. Resolution to accept the minutes, so I need a motion?
Move.
Discussion?
I wasn't here, so I, reading over, I noticed the discussion about the meal sites, and last year, the Adirondack Foundation does a lot of site visits over the summer, and last summer, Mindy helped put it on, we visited the one in Brent Lake. Their operation there is amazing, so I don't know if that's a resource for us as well, but what they do there with their meal site program and their food pantry is incredible. So, I would definitely recommend them as a resource for the community.
Any other comments? Motion to pass the minutes?
Aye.
All in favor? Heather was, Heather's going to be here a little bit later. Heather was, Heather's going to be here a little bit later to discuss the upcoming centennial, closer to seven, so we'll hold that. The next item is resolution authorize a purchase of new enclosed cargo trailer. So this is a replacement trailer to the one that was damaged and we got a settlement from a couple board meetings ago, maybe two months ago, we decided to take the insurance payout for that. This is a replacement of that trailer and the authorization for Department of Public Property and Programs to proceed. There are three bids attached. I need a motion to bring this to the floor.
Motion.
Discussion. No discussion, put to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next resolution is to recognize the rehiring of summer staff for the Department of Public Property and Programs. These are seasonal positions that are in the 2025 budget. It includes a cemetery maintenance laborer, seasonal parks laborer, two recreational specialists, which are lifeguards, recreational assistant, two of those. My understanding is that there are still a couple of other positions that need to be filled, but this is in support of summer operations and youth programs. I need a motion.
You have.
Okay, discussion. Yep.
Just a question about a lifeguard counselor.
Yep.
We do not depend on the operator. Okay. But we are hoping to send up the 30 kids to the community program every year for the last four or five years.
Yep. Awesome, thanks, Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is a resolution for the Director of Public Property and Programs to use ARPA funds for town park improvements. The background on this is we still have some unspent ARPA funds that do need to be, they have a sunset date, and we do need to use this money or we lose it. It was initially put to community, positive community impacts, or something along those lines, I can't remember the exact definition.
It's pretty, it's pretty broad, it's anything to like benefit the community, support the community, yeah.
So the, this resolution is to authorize Director of Public Property and Programs to use the ARPA funds for town park improvements. There are currently two projects that he has. One is the installation of retractable awnings on both sides of the north pavilion at Riverfront Park, that would be in support of our, anyone that rents it, as well as our weekly farmer's market in the event of rain, that would help create a larger shelter. The second is the removal of wooden bleachers from both McCartel and Sodom fields, something our insurance agent has been asking us to do for quite a while, and it would be replacing those with aluminum bleachers that are less maintenance and are going to last longer. So I need a motion to bring this to the floor.
Motion.
Discussion.
One thing Pete did mention also, the bleachers would be able to be moved from location to location, which is a big plus for them, and we buy them once, not many times, as it wouldn't, well behind that.
I'm sure the farmer's market will be happy, and anybody else who is down there.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is a resolution to approve a budget appropriation. The town's receipt of our insurance recovery from the trailer that we are going to replace was $6,493. That goes into a different fund as revenue, and it hasn't yet been allocated to a budget line. This will put it to the parks equipment budget line, from which it then will be withdrawn to pay for said trailer. I need a motion to bring this forward.
You have. Second.
And discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is a resolution to award occupancy tax for the spring. These are the spring awards from groups that made applications here in, in April. I'd like to bring this to the floor for a discussion.
Motion.
And discussion.
So Jim and I had a good conversation this afternoon about the occupancy tax. As you can see, there's $71,000 left, a little more than $18,000 were given away. And so reading over the comments, there was a lot of, you know, declining support and cannot guarantee funding, and I think a lot of that is based off of the ongoing idea that occupancy tax is there to kick off events and not be there as a forever source of funding. But doing a little bit of research about Warren County occupancy tax and how it is allocated, it actually is there to support ongoing events. And you look at Maple Days, and Thurman is touted as a success for ongoing support of occupancy tax from the county. And, you know, as we look at this community, we're going into a summer with two fewer restaurants than we had last summer. Our economic landscape is very different than it was last year, and I think that we need to look at how we allocate funds to anchor events and anchor institutions that are really going to be bringing in businesses and bringing in people to the community. And, you know, I was thinking too, Jim and I were talking about this, we as a town went to, well, I shouldn't say we as a town, you and Kevin went to the county, and you guys asked for $2.5 million of occupancy tax money for infrastructure, and that was a really bold and creative move. And I think we as a town board ultimately have a say, and this is not to dismiss the work of the committee, but we ultimately have a say in how the funds are done. Other towns don't have occupancy tax committees, the boards just do it. So I think we can look and give guidance and advice to the committee on how they start allocating this money. And from my perspective, it's maybe, let's start supporting these anchor events, you know, Music by the River, the farmer's market, even anchor institutions like the Tannery Pond, a little bit different, let's look at those a little bit differently. And the other topic of conversation that we had is, we have won a marketing committee that has no budget, and we've been allocated $140,000 from the county for this tri-county branding initiative, but at some point, we're going to have to pay to play to be a part of that. But we also need some marketing for the town that's going to be different, and Jim also had the great idea of, you know, with our businesses looking different, our landscape looking differently, some professional grant writers, some support, so I don't think we need to make any decisions tonight, but putting it out there for the board to think about, again, not to dismiss the work in any way, shape, or form of the occupancy tax committee, but thinking a little bit differently about, at least for this time period, how we are allocating these funds. We can be creative and bold, just like we were with infrastructure, you know? There's nothing wrong with doing that, a little bit of a shift, maybe for now.
Yeah. And, and I'd like to add, you know, is, is we look at this, and, and as I read through some of the awards, a lot of, a lot of the award is, is directed at individual marketing, so the individual marketing of, of a Fall Fest for the Glass Blower, or Tannery Pond, or Music by the River. And at the end of the day, you know, it, it's, it's done differently in Essex County. All, all occupancy tax money in Essex County goes to Roost, which is a organization then that promotes the area and promotes events. So my thinking is, we're not going to be able to change how Warren County allocates its occupancy tax money, but, but by putting a, an award to the marketing committee, the marketing committee can go out and hire a marketing professional that won't just market the events that applied, but all events that are occurring in town, and, and that's going to help all businesses in town. So, you know, my, my thought and Anna's thought kind of collectively at the same time as we were trying to, I guess, suppress our excitement over, hey, we've got common ground on this, on this topic, what was to, you know, put money into the marketing committee to hire marketing professionals. And, and by, by no means do I think that it should be limited to that, you know, hiring a grant writer that can write grants for the farmer's market, for some of these other nonprofit events that are going on, help support those events in, in a different way, and can be beneficial to the, the wider town at the same time. So, again, I think that's something that we as a board should look at, and in the near future, make a determination if we want to go that direction.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know who's first. Beth's first? Okay.
Yeah, I guess we'll wait. I guess we'll wait.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Beth Mark, in Commerce Market.
And I want to address you guys directly tonight, because I think the way it's set up is that you vote on the recommendation from the committee, and I'm asking you to amend that. The occupancy tax request from the farmer's market was $3,375 out of a total budget of $5,300, and I believe they're recommending $2,000. I had no idea until getting the packet for this meeting that they had come to any numbers at all. And I don't know if each individual, a member of the committee, of the board reads each of the applications or not. If not, I'd like to just read something from my application. And this is a public, project description for the farmer's market. Every vibrant town needs a farmer's market. Occupancy tax funding allows our volunteer nonprofit market to exist. Food tourism, or agritourism, is one of the fastest-growing segments of tourism. Farmer's markets have transformed from being just community events to tourist attractions. Markets are an experience in local culture, food, and crafts. With the dissolution of the North Creek Business Alliance, we had to find another fiduciary partner. Fortunately, we have joined with the Adirondack Community Outreach Center. Our work distributing market food vouchers to shoppers at the food pantry complements the mission of the ACOC. One of our vendors donates her time providing chair massages and gives her income to the ACOC Backpack Program. We also provide space to Johnsburg Historical Society, Tannery Pond, Kids Programs, Town of Johnsburg Library, and Cornell Cooperative Extension. And this year, we're initiating a pumpkin festival in conjunction with the Glass Studios Pumpkin Patch fundraiser. My point here is that, oh, I know what I want to say, is that in last year's comments back from the committee, when we got, each of us got those, it said we needed to look for alternate sources of funding for the ongoing, and I appreciate that, but I think it's important for the board to understand that when we go out and ask for money, we ask for big bucks from season sponsors, and at $500 a season, and that money goes entirely to the vouchers. We're, because we're a small market and there aren't enough farmers and produce people, we're not eligible for SNAP at this point. Hopefully, maybe in the future, we'll have enough vendors of, of basic pantry foods that we would be able to get SNAP, but... So we're already asking a big ask, from granting, we get close to $2,000 for the vouchers, and from the community, different companies and individuals, we get another $3,000 that go to the vouchers. We could increase vendor fees, and, but that's sort of taxation to our small businesses a little bit to do that. So I'm asking that the board recommends the full ask of our occupancy tax application.
Beth, can I ask a question? I know that when we were open as Barbino, Juniper Hill came because we made it worth their time.
Mm-hmm.
We, we bought a lot of what was, they had.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, I don't know if I, I don't even know if...
That's how we got Juniper Hill.
Yeah.
And we're fortunate now that they're staying with us.
Are they going to stay even though there's less restaurants?
It has, Barbino hasn't bought from them in the last couple of years that I'm aware of. I've tried to get Garnet Hill Lodge to buy their stuff, but it's just, I think it's, it hasn't worked, and fortunately, they're still supporting us, so.
I appreciate the comments that you guys had, Jim, the conversation that you and Anna had, it is really valuable, and I feel with you, Beth, because much like you experienced, as far as I know, nobody that was on that list of getting an award was contacted by the committee or brought back to the committee to ask more questions. There was one email exchange of a couple other clarifications that Candace Murray got for the Tannery Pond, but as far as any, I guess I looked up the, and the, the committee has in their information as their guidelines online, that the Johnsburg Town Board or Committee reserves the right to request additional information from any applicant, and beginning in the fall, the committee will schedule a date and time during which all applicants will be allowed to give a short presentation on their event or project, and answer questions from the committee members. And the applicants are not required to do this, but they would have the option. I just want it noted that that was never offered to any of the applicants in this round, and I think that's an oversight, because as we look at this funding, you know, and I look at the ones that were funded, and I stand before you as resident, a board member at Tannery, but also I'm the, the committee chair for the community fund for the Gore Mountain Region, and we grant out to a lot of nonprofits, and there's a lot of need out there, it's the ACOC, we grant to the farmer's market, we grant to a number of things, including the Town of Johnsburg, we support the library, we support, you know, any of those things through that. And communication is so important. Let people know what you're looking for, let them know what they, what you need from them in order to understand better. If you need more information about an application, reach out, you know, it, you have to make it clear. And I understand, and I, you know, the shift in their funding focus has been more towards this last two years of marketing and promotion of new events, but really, as I review, both on the side of like the community fund, as well as everything else, the OCTAX, I can see that new events need a huge amount of support for a tremendous amount of time, and they need to be consistent and consistently supported in order to, to have growth, right? The first senior day that you guys did last week, Arnold, how big is that going to be maybe next year? Everybody got a lot out of that last week, and that may need some more funding, right? And I've invited that to like, come to the community fund, and we'll try to get you some fun for that next year, too. But it just requires consistency, and that you rethinking the fact that it always has to be something new, we're only going to support something new. If we have to create something new at a, on a different date that doesn't, doesn't compete with something else that's going on that's been established, if we can't do the hardship fund on that same first weekend in August, they're not going to get growth. People can't tell people and invite them and have them come back and have it grow. So it's like, we really need to rethink, what are we fostering here? Do we want... Do we want to keep supporting some of these, these community events, like the History Weekend? They don't have a lot of places that they can go for more funding, but it brings people to town. People, I've never seen so many people in a cemetery down off Garnet Lake Road as last fall. It was a constant flow, and it was people coming from out of town that heard that their ancestors were buried there, and they wanted to hear about it, and then the Teddy Roosevelt stuff. That's a core piece of our history that brings people to this town and supports it. So, coordinating and collaborating, I am all for it. I know Tannery Pond is trying really hard to coordinate things so that if History Weekend is happening, we're having some history talks here, right? Everybody is trying to look and coordinate so that we're not competing for the same audience, but when people come to town, if they're going to feel something's going on, let's have it going on Thursday night, and Friday night, and on Saturday, and an event at the Ski Bowl Park, and it's an event in town, and a walk, an arts walk, you know, in Main Street. So, I think just creatively stepping back and thinking about where our OCTAX dollars need to go is really important. And I'll just say one other thing, and that is that in the spring, or the fall, I was part of a group that was putting in to, to fund a really good initiative for advertising in the Adirondack life. And the OCTAX Committee restricted any lodging people from being in there. And that would have made a really impressive piece, and it would have built it out, and I just think they were the ones that generated the money. So, I'm just wondering why we would really restrict them from participating in that piece, especially that particular thing that had dollars, you know, associated with it. So, anyway, but thank you for just rethinking that. I mean, we were disappointed on behalf of Tannery Pond Center. You know, we cannot pay for all of the costs around an event. It's just not possible. The arts, cultural arts programs are not self-sustaining. What they are is uplifting to a community. And when those things are happening, people come in and they have dinner before, they have dinner after, or lunch, they walk, you know, down Main Street, they shop, they stop and get gas at Stewart's. All of those things float us, and it's just, it's disappointing to have it limited to a couple hundred dollars of advertising that you and I know doesn't go very far, you know? And I like to think of the arts and all the cultural events that we do as the secret sauce on the Big Mac that is our town. And, you know, it can happen if there's not support. So, if you can rethink it or reconsider it, I think it would be a really good direction to go since none of these organizations had any advance notice or more conversation around the why and what their needs were. Thanks.
Christine Powers. So, I'm speaking here tonight as the founder and creator of the Adirondack Labyrinth in relation to the OCTAX. Similar to other arts and cultural initiatives, the Adirondack Labyrinth is a labor of love for my husband and I. We have received very generous support from the town for which we are really, really grateful. What I'd like to share is that, similar to nonprofit organizations, this is not technically a nonprofit, it's not a moneymaker. The last two summers, we've brought over 1,000 people to Baker's Mills. Not even Johnsburg, Baker's Mills. They stay at Alpine Lodge. You know why? Because they come from far away. We have people who come to the labyrinth from other countries. It is a thing, but it's not a moneymaker. And so, this is a good example of an indirect tourism attraction that could greatly support our economy, but not our ticket sales. It's like $10. Or if you're a Johnsburg resident, it's free, always and forever. So, I would just like to throw that in the pot. I sat out this round of OCTAX because I was frustrated. To do a half-page ad in Adirondack Life for us was difficult. I stayed in it because I was one of the organizers, but to echo Mindy, it fell apart. The initiative fell apart, and I was disappointed to see that because of the exclusions and because the reach was too high. We're very small businesses that were trying to get a coalition together with great and favorable pricing from Adirondack Life to us, which was a huge favor that was negotiated by Greg Tom. We really need to give Greg credit for that. So, I would support opening up discussions for additional lanes of how we come about distributing OCTAX funds. I would be happy to be part of that conversation. I was up here a couple weeks ago for the Tri-Town Initiative, and I dangled South Roost. So, since I've lived here, I've said I thought that was a good idea, but I will say it's complicated. It's complicated, and I will say that because I've been in marketing, advertising, PR, and fundraising for 30 years. So, I do hope the town continues to utilize me. I'm so glad to be serving on that committee and glad that Kevin invited me. I'd like to be part of the solution for all of us. So, I thank you for your time.
I'm Arthur Webb. I have a question before to the Town Board. Is there a possibility, is there a possibility to take the recommendations that have been presented and send the notes back to the committee for reconsideration? Is that part of your process?
Well, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board to decide.
True, but I mean, I'm thinking that-
For future, for future rounds, absolutely.
I was thinking now. Given the, given the comments made so far, it seems to me that there's, the process is not as complete as it needs to be in order to justify the allocation of these funds. Given your introduction to your comments about trying to balance between new and sustainability of existing things, it seems to me that part of this may be sending it back to the committee with some recommendations. And the second point I would say is, there was something in, in reading it, I was somewhat struck by the comments that were in the column related to Tannery Pond. I'm not a board member. And there's two things that struck me there. One, it didn't sound like that's the way Tannery Pond works because they're extraordinarily responsible, transparent, and detail-oriented. The comments that were in the box seem not to reflect exactly the way TPC does its business. This third point on that is creeping into a conversation we had last year during occupancy tax, is that some grants are offset by sales of tickets. It was one of those written comments. Is that part of the policy of the Town Board, that sales, ticket sales, offset grants? If so, that's not, I don't think that makes any sense practically or logically because it's a disincentive for individuals to kind of start new things. And I thought we had a good discussion last year, and I thought there was a consensus that indeed, that's probably not a good policy, is have sales offset against the grant. The next point is, is that it seems to me that there are anchor programs, similar to the way Anna and Jim talked about it. There's anchor entities here that need to be supported on an ongoing basis for sustainability. At the same time, there needs to be a balance between new and innovative kind of programs. We always want that to happen. But without sustaining current activities, I'll give another example, the community event at Tannery Pond. I forget, last year, it's been done two years in a row, and I think last year it had about 1,500 people. Is that, I'm not sure, is that close to, okay, good. And so, when you think about that, it seems to me the OCTAX should be a balance between sustaining really substantial programs that are repeating each year along with new. So, again, I'm just wondering whether or not the Town Board, in its process right now, today, tonight, has the authority or responsibility perhaps to send back to the committee, or that the board itself make some decisions about the allocation of OCTAX? Right? See, my time's up.
Yeah. Yeah. Have we brought it to the floor yet, Jean, or no?
I'm sorry?
Have we brought it to the floor yet?
Peter Horvath, I just want to reemphasize what's already been said. I think it's important for our community to have a sense of continuity, a sense of sustained events, to just focus on these, whoa, big, little new things. I think goes away from what a community feels. A community would like to know, oh, I can go to this event, it happens every year, and I really love it. So, I think the idea that we spend this money just for these exciting new things, and we aren't even spending all the OCTAX money we have. So, why we got so obsessed with having new things, I love new things, but I think it's important to have things that continue our sense of community. So, I think the board should look at the criteria used to award these grants and consider that we should act as a community to continue events. Thank you.
As a board, would you like to have a discussion?
What is our OCTAX family?
Yeah. I mean, I'd just like to point out, in the awards that are here, there's one new event, and the rest of the events are pretty much ongoing events. So, Music By the River, Tannery Pond Workshops, those I do believe are something new.
Tannery Pond.
Right? Bring it.
Yeah. Yeah, the recommendations are Unified Cycling Mountain Bike Race at Ski Bowl Park, a brand-new event, should be bringing in about 150 to 200 racers. They asked for $1,000 and received $1,000. North Country Hardship Fund, as we all know Wayne Stock better, requested $9,000. Recommended award was $6,000 for stage rental, advertising only. There's the Johnsburg Historical Society, asked for 1,500. Recommended award was 1,500. Johnsburg Historical Society, Gem Radio Theater, Depot Museum, asked for 1,950, received, or recommended award was 1,950. 80K Glass Fall Festival, the ask was for 3,430. The recommended award was for 620. Might add that that is a business that is working out of town building at Riverside Park. Tannery Pond asked for 4,500. The recommended award was for 1,680. Music By the River asked for 3,000. The award was for 3,000. 80K Hot Glass Cool Jazz asked for $3,000. They've got a recommended award of $713, and again, for advertising. North Creek Farmers Market asked for 3,375. They received 200, or recommended award, 2,275. So, those were the awards, the asks and the awards. Total was $18,739. That was a total of awards. So, I don't know if I have the total ask.
We have $71,575 left, and it was a total of $89,000.
We need to-
Table wasn't done this back. I think this is at the point where there's a lot of-
Yeah, I mean, we can-
What would you like to say?
Ten years ago, when I wrote the guidelines for the OCTAX Committee, they were exactly that, guidelines, nothing else.
Yeah. Fifteen years ago, when I wrote, they were guidelines.
Yeah. And I, and I would, I would, I would sit, my opinion is that, yes, we need to support ongoing events that don't have an income source otherwise. I don't know how many people come into town for Music By the River, but if we don't support Music By the River, Music By the River goes away. And I know, I know that we have standing, standing support for town events. You know, maybe, maybe Music By the River becomes a town event. Maybe the, maybe the farmers' market becomes a town-sponsored market, and we support them through OCTAX with direct awards as we do the other events like Lights On and in Holiday, Fourth of July Holiday. I am, I am, we have asked this committee to do a work. It's got a rubric that we have approved as a board. Maybe the rubric isn't working. I don't want to undermine the work of the committee and the time that they've put on because all that does is discourage community involvement. I am fine tabling this. I am fine passing this as-is, and then looking at alternative ways we could allocate money. $71,000, I would like to see us hire a marketing firm to market the glass-blowing events, the Tannery Pond events, the farmers' market, and any other event that might be out there. I think that could be better use of our money than individual awards directed to the marketing of those events. Again, I don't want to change the recommendations. I'm fine at tabling them, putting it back to the committee. I'm fine with passing as-is, and I'm fine, in the future, looking at our remaining funds and seeing where we would like to spend them. I do know saving for an event is a good thing, but $71,000 in a bank account doesn't promote our area, right? So, I think we need to find a better balance. I think the committee has done a lot of hard work, and they've done their diligence, their due diligence, and it's us to, it's us as a board to go back and look.
Well, I would say it's hard to, I have the recommendations, but I don't have the applications in front of me to read, to know what the ask was for. This is not, well, I'm just going to say it. I use rubrics as a teacher, and if the majority of my students were getting below 60, I would reteach or relook at the rubric. I think to the point of what Mindy does, we have $71,000. We should be trying to give more of it away in this case. I appreciate due diligence, but I think maybe the pendulum's swinging a little too far in not giving it away. And again, to the point of, we are going into summer with two fewer restaurants being open. Let's support the businesses that are open, and so, from my opinion, let's table it. And I don't know that the, that the committee understands that that's the layout, that that's the economic landscape right now, and maybe that's some good feedback for them to take. And also, they should be open to feedback from our, from our board about this, and from the community.
So, Kevin, Kevin is the board liaison to the committee. He might have the full applications that we can review and look at, and Jean has them. So, I need a motion to table.
Move.
And sorry to everybody who put them in because I know that delays it for them as well.
And so, their words are tabled.
Can I ask you a question? I'm curious, when does that $71,000 pot get reviewed?
I'm curious, when is that $71,000 pot get re...
Well, not, not continue, we wish, but, but, yeah. So we'll get it again, so that will also be used for the fall application money. And then, excuse me, we'll get it again next year. We'll get the next round of money next year.
In tabling this, we, we are not making any award and no organization will be getting any money at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to make that clear to everybody.
Yep. Okay, you want to, we'll just work through the rest of this. Okay. Okay, next up is resolution authorized ground penetrating radar for Barton Mines Road. I'm a little unsure of what we got going on. My, my, my little bit of knowledge is that the road isn't holding up, probably built by the same people that built Route 8 going to Wells. So we want to try and find out what's going on underneath to see if we can repair it, stabilize it, and make more permanent repairs. And JMT, the engineering services that we use for the Highway Department, I believe is recommended a ground penetrating radar. Help me out. Highway Committee, Highway Super, is that about capture the picture? Okay. So this, this is authorizing the expenditure for ground penetrating radar for Barton Mines Road. I need a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next... Sure, Ken. It's $5,571, Bob. Stand next to it and find out how strong your bones are. I am sure that there is money in Fred's budget for it. Yes? Chip's money? The next is authorization to proceed with the purchase of culverts. And these culverts are for a couple of different roads, is my understanding, Fred, correct? So we've got three quotes. The lowest quote is not the recommended quote. It's off by, I don't know, roughly 70, 40, 40 some odd dollars. And that is because it doesn't have the current state contract, the contract, the recommended supplier has the, the state contract. I know Fred has also prepared a plan for these roads with, with the budget for Shoulderstone required, the reclamation, you know, the entire cost of these projects along with these culverts. I believe he'll be sharing that with the Highway Committee at their next meeting. So I need a motion to bring the authorization to proceed. We don't need a resolution, we just need to authorize.
Well, I need a motion to...
To bring it to the table.
Bring it to the floor, and then there does need to be a vote in order for it to...
Yep. So I need a motion to move forward.
Motion?
Second.
And any discussion?
Just so the, the, you need to know how much it will be for the one that we're going with?
I believe it's several different parts.
Several, several different parts?
Yeah, so it's couplers, it's solid ends, it's...
But this is the total?
Yeah, that's the total.
Okay.
Yeah, so 10,433.91.
Okay.
Believe that would probably be Chip's money as well because it's going to last longer than 10 years, as long as the water goes through it and not around it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next is, I should give a sewer, sewer update as well as addressing this resolution. The sewer, the sewer is moving forward. We issued a notice to proceed last week. We had a pre-construction meeting with the USDA, all the contractors in Cedarwood Engineering. We did a walk, brought the USDA to the various points where construction will occur. Issue to proceed was made. We're in the process of getting the schedules, coordinating those schedules. One of the contractors was, was already ahead of the, the game. That's our collection and conveyance by Keller. They'll be doing all the piping. They'll also be doing the horizontal bore under Route 28. They've already put in their application to the DOT in order to do the horizontal drill under 28. And in fact, everything from the Behind Town Hall under 28 to the tanks that will be from the Orta Lodge, as well as the nursing home, and the highway garage will all be a forced main horizontal bore. So that will not dig up the, the park. Main Street will be an open dig, and they do plan on starting this, this spring, summer. So Main Street will be, at times, a construction zone. Their lay-down yard is going to be the lot across from the train station, Kitty Corner to the Copper Field. So that's where they're going to lay down their pipe, have their work trailer, and be working out of. The one thing that will be happening is they will plate the open trench for times when they're not working. They're going to, they're going to work, fill it in with the area that is open, they will plate it. On weekends, they will fill it. They're probably will have a piece of equipment parked at the area that they're working as they work up Main Street or down Main Street, whichever way you're facing. And that piece of equipment will be left overnight parked on, on the side of the road. And the reason for that is it's a, it's a big piece of equipment. It's got metal tracks and for them to go back and forth to the load-down yard, we will not have a Main Street left but a, a dirt road. So that's what the plan will be. They also have a plan for, you know, repaving at the end of the project and seating, reclamation. Currently, their schedule has completion in November for collection and conveyance. The plant behind Town Hall, we don't have a schedule yet for them. They're, they're working on that. There's a little bit more lead time in some of the things that they'll be ordering. But we are moving forward with the sewer. And the committee is now kind of transitioning from the, the planning stages and the engineering and, and, and work on that to rules and regulations, operating procedures, that type of thing. So that's what the committee will begin to focus on as Cedarwood manages the construction. Tonight's resolution that's in front of us, in January, before we had funding for our sewer, Orta, the town in Orta worked out the, the resolution that we passed in January, which would allow Orta to design, permit, and build their own system. Since that time, we closed the funding gap, as, as well as we have worked out a contingency with a three-party agreement should we fall behind schedule, which is for them to put in an SBR unit at the park that would allow them to open on time. We don't have to rescind this resolution tonight. This was a resolution that allowed them to build their own wastewater system, permitted. We're moving forward with ours and they are confident enough that we will be substantially complete for their opening so that we won't even have to pursue the three-party agreement with Front Street. We're going to still work in parallel and try to hammer out the details of that agreement and put it on the table, and if we need to use it, we'll sign it. But this resolution was, is something that will need to come off of the books, whether it comes off tonight, whether it comes off at a later date, it, it, it does need to come off because obviously we found our funding gap and we're building our sewer. I, I am in the thick of it and I have conversations almost daily with engineers, with Orta. So I don't necessarily see the bigger public view. In the bigger public view might be that, why are we doing this? And there might be confusion. I'm fine in tabling that, clearing some of that confusion that might be out there up, or moving forward with this. But I just want to say that and do it at the board's comfort level, so.
I'm fine with tabling it until, one, Kevin is back and two, there's a conversation tomorrow when you have your, your student meeting.
Sure. Sounds good.
It doesn't?
Yep. So we're going to, we'll table that. At some point, we will need to pull that off of the book, so it's not an open.
Yeah, and let's make it a priority for the next one, too.
Yep. Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah. Yeah, so the question for those in YouTube land was a question on parking and its impact on the parking behind Town Hall. For the most part, for the summer, that parking will most likely be blocked off. That's going to be an active work zone as well as the Carol Thomas Trail. So we're not going to necessarily have access to that. They'll put their work trailer there, they're going to have their heavy equipment there, and, and that could very well be their, their lay-down yard. I've, I've, I've had some conversations with Pete and we are looking at other options and reaching out to some vacant lots. One, one is the lot no longer owned by Jill Broderick is the best way to, to, I guess, explain it. When she sold her building, Broderick Real Estate, but there are lots around, there's, I believe, one, if not two, lots that she owned along 28N that in the past has been used for, for rafting parking. So I know that Pete's going to, Pete and I were in discussions of reaching out to them as using that as potential parking for some of the bigger events that we do have in town. We're aware that it's going to be an inconvenience and we're looking at the options that are available to us to help address that and support the businesses and events. Yep. Candace? Yeah. I believe so, but the town's, in Tannery Pond Septic, will be hooked up to the new sewer system, so. Hopefully not. And if there is, it will be a short interruption. And we won't have Cinco de Mayo Taco Night right before. No, not at the, not at the Depot Museum. They're going to be, the, the lot across from the Depot Museum, that four-acre lot, that's where the other company will be using their, is their lay-down yard and work trailer. Not the current parking lot at all, no. It'll be across the street, Kitty Corner to the Copper Field, Elliot Monters old lot. Yes, across Main Street. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, construction... Yeah, absolutely. When we get those schedules, we're going to, we're going to share those. That's one of the things that USDA was, you know, you know, very clear with, that we needed to show that. I would, I would say ample. We're going to do our best. Some people's idea of ample and others' idea of ample time, one might be a week, the other might be a month. But when we get that information, we will share it, most likely through the town's Facebook website is our best venue. We can post it also on our town website. But yeah, when we have that information, we'll share it. Main Street, in, in our collection conveyance, they want to start May 12th, and that's why we wanted to post last week, you know, the closure of the Carol Thomas Trail and that construction was going to start. So, yep. Yeah, it would make sense. It becomes an issue of funding. Any, any curb cut that they do, any sidewalk that they need to go through, they, they will repair. As far as, as redoing all the sidewalks, that would be a completely different grant and, and money that we would have to give for that. County road. I think it might be longer than that, but yeah. It, it would. I know that our contractor is going to repave the part where they have dug up. The county, the county repaved South Main Street. Our hope is that the county will come in and repave North Main Street when we're done with the sewer. And, and at that point, hopefully, upgrade some of the sidewalks. But that's a, that'd be a county, that would be a county, we need to work with the county to get that done. I'm not going to put any pressure on them. I'm not going to put any, they just gave us... Yeah, exactly.
It might be a good conversation for Allison with grants, just to even look at it. We could do that. I do want to point, Heather has been here for the...
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. So we're going to, we're going to move on and bring Heather Flanagan up to talk about...
She's my boss, I don't want to keep her away.
I know, I know, I'm sorry. So this is a discussion on Central, the Johnsburg Central School's upcoming centennial.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Yes, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Heather Flanagan, the building principal at Johnsburg Central School. And I am here tonight to talk about a very exciting event that we have coming up later in the spring. Friday, June 13th is our centennial celebration for 100 years of the original building that sits on the hill, which is now Johnsburg Central School. A little history, and I have a few pictures that I brought along. Back in 1897, the, the school that sat up on the hill was the Union School, also known as North Creek High School. And this housed students in the area in grade seven and up, the largest... And this housed students in the area in grade seven and up, the largest school in the area at the time. Moving forward to 1925, there was a need for a larger building. So during that year, a larger brick and mortar building, which was the original building that we are celebrating this spring, was built right up on the center of the hill. Couple pictures. This one's kind of neat because it has the new brick and mortar building. And off to the right here, you can see where the wooden building, the Union School, sat to the right. Kind of neat. I never knew that until it was pointed out to me in this in this picture. And this school was taken down once this one was built and opened. So over the years, of course, we have put on many additions onto the original building that was built in 1925. Our additions went on in 1952, then 1963, 1973, 1996, and 2007, which brings us to the school that you currently see sitting on the hill today. In 1946, the 21 local school districts, one-room schoolhouses that existed in the town of Johnsburg were centralized. And in 1946 is when all those children started coming to Johnsburg Central School. So that's just a little bit of the history. And we thought it was a great opportunity to celebrate 100 years. So we're putting together the event, as I mentioned, on June 13th, and you're all very welcome to attend. I've left a couple flyers here with the board and you'll start seeing these put up around various businesses around town. During this evening, the event is going to run from 4:00 to 7:30 and is going to consist of free food, which will be a combination of burgers, hot dogs, and Anna being one of our family and consumers, our family and consumer science teacher. Many of her classes are going to help prepare the food that will go along with the barbecue that we're going to have.
I make them wash their hands and really help. So don't worry.
So the students are going to be very involved in already in the planning of this and then in the actual event on the 13th. We're also going to have live music throughout the evening, which will consist of many musicians who are Johnsburg alumni that are going to come to perform. We're going to have a nice history display that the Johnsburg Historical Society is helping me work on. And it's gonna it's gonna be a pretty extensive timeline of the history of how the school came to be and even before the school sat here on the hill in the one-room schoolhouses that were in the area. We're going to have guided school tours, which will be guided by our National Honor Society students. A couple of things for the for the little ones. We're gonna have a bouncy house and an inflatable slide, can be for the big ones, too. Yard games out in the field, just a lot of, you know, fun activities going on from about 4:00 to 6:30 out behind our school. And then at 6:30 that evening, the culminating event will be the dedication of a historical marker, which we have secured through the Pomeroy Foundation. So that marker will be placed right on the hill in front of the school, near our current sign, not the digital sign, but the other wooden one. It'll be placed right there and we're all going to go out to the front of the school and have a celebration and the unveiling of the historical marker. So that's pretty much what I hope the evening will be. And again, you are all very welcome to attend. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I just have one.
Yes.
Do we know who the oldest surviving student of Johnsburg Central is?
The oldest surviving student? Boy, not sure that I know who that is. I mean, I can a couple come to mind that might be, but I don't want to say it and be wrong, so. I guess I'd have to call upon my ladies that are working with me at the Historical Society who might know that. They're doing a lot of research and putting together a nice display, so they may very well know that.
Yeah, it'd be great to.
That would be neat, yeah. Yeah, a lot, a lot of neat history. I've learned a ton just being a part of this project. So when I realized that, you know, it was coming up, I said, hey, what a great reason for a celebration, right? So just thought it would be a real neat event. So a lot of people are helping me out. I have a fairly large committee that keeps growing and growing and growing, but I'm hoping that it's going to be great. So please spread the word and come on out if you can. Yes, Mindy?
I think it's kind of helpful that those cool ones, the celebrations, I'll put aside with your students are going to be on display with their artwork.
Yes.
And on gallery more than not.
Right.
So ice cream social on the floor on the 13th. Like here, Tannery's, they come see their artwork.
Okay.
Grab some ice cream, store ice cream, and I'd like.
Yeah, and then come on up to school and have some more food and fun. Yeah. Yeah.
Free food's gonna get 'em.
That's great. Anyone else?
It's really cool because this year, it's been taped as well, artwork is in the gallery.
Yes, yes, actually, we just the flyer on that just came out today, so that just got posted. That's that's great. Anyone else have any questions? All right, great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Heather.
Thanks.
Yeah. So our next next item is a resolution to authorize change orders for North Creek Sewer Change orders are going to be something, change orders are something part of any project. How change orders will work with the sewer project is first off, the engineers, the contractor will talk to the engineer, the engineer will look at it, see that it's in the scope of, see that it's in the scope of need and budget and within the contingencies. The engineers will sign off on it, then the town needs to sign off on it. After the town has signed off on it, USADA will sign off on it, and then the change order can proceed. USDA, yeah. In order for it to be paid, it's got to go through the whole, all vouchers will need to go through that whole process as well. So vouchers are going to be signed by Cedarwood. The town needs to look at those vouchers and sign those vouchers. And then USADA, USDA, will sign off on those vouchers and then payment can be made. This resolution is to authorize Kevin Bean and Jim Williams the authority to review and authorize change orders related to the project within the overall approved estimated budget. Our desire to put two people on this is so that the change order doesn't get held up if it needs to be done in a quicker manner. Kevin will ultimately be the one that signs the voucher for payment. The change order, this will allow both Kevin and I to sign a change order. So I need a motion to bring this to the floor.
Ooh.
Discussion? Yep.
Is there any dollar amount? If we can, we can put it back to the board.
No, no. So any change order will have to stay within the contingency amount that we have budgeted for. And our engineers, you know, will make sure of that. And that's also why USADA needs to sign it as well. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is executive session. Do we need a motion to leave the regular board meeting? All right, so I need a motion to to leave the regular town meeting?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're in executive session.
Need a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to re-enter into the regular town board meeting?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No action? Yeah, no action was taken in executive session. The next item on the agenda is a resolution relating to Wilbur Hitchcock Road. I need a motion?
Motion?
I'm going to just read the resolution. Whereas the most recent New York State local highway inventory includes an entry for Wilbur Hitchcock Road DOT ID 115924 in the town of Johnsburg, beginning at Edwards Hill Road, indeed ending after .15 mile, which is approximately 792 feet in length. And whereas this listing appears consistent with the town board resolution dated November 7th, 1963, setting forth the inventory of the town highways, constituting the town highway system and deemed public highways pursuant to the highway law. Road number 85 on the inventory appears to be a .15 mile portion of Wilbur Hitchcock Road that was listed as a highway by use pursuant to Highway Law Section 189. And whereas such listing on the local highway inventory is also consistent with the town board resolution 150-15, which lists this .15 mile long Wilbur Hitchcock Road along with 14 other roads or portions of roads and declared them town roads for which the town is responsible for them legally and for their maintenance, and they are open to the traveling public without restriction. And whereas at or near the end of this .15 mile long Wilbur Hitchcock Road, there appears to be a private dirt road that leads northwest over tax map 116 dot dash one dash three five NF Dunlop to tax map parcel number 116 dot dash one dash three four NF Hitchcock, roughly .31 mile in length, 1,635 feet. And whereas the town board has become aware of a property dispute among adjacent landowners regarding the use of the dirt road extending beyond the .15 mile length of Wilbur Hitchcock Road, and such dispute has caused the town to review the status of Wilbur Hitchcock Road. And whereas it appears that the town highway department has recently undertaken maintenance of the dirt road beyond the .15 mile length of Wilbur Hitchcock Road, and whereas the town board has requested town council to review all relevant town records related to the status of Wilbur Hitchcock Road as a town highway, and town council has reported that they have not received any records that would lead to the conclusion that the dirt road beyond the .15 mile length of Wilbur Hitchcock Road is a town road. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the town board confirms that Wilbur Hitchcock Road remains a town highway from Edwards Hill Road, a distance of .15 mile. Two, the town board concludes that based upon all relevant town records, the dirt road extending beyond the .15 mile distance of Wilbur Hitchcock Road is not a town highway, but instead a private road, the use of which is determined by deeded in common law rights of the involved parties. The town board apologizes to the owners of the involved properties for any trespass that may have occurred when the town highway department undertook maintenance on the road. So we're going to pass this resolution reaffirming the status of Wilbur Hitchcock Road and apologizing for any trespass that may have occurred. Any further board discussion? All in?
Remove this resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Warrants. Need a motion to bring these to the floor? Any conversation? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Historians' report is in our packet. Committee reports?
Well, we haven't had much as far as the solid waste meetings. We kicked it off before the next meeting. We'll be here, I think, some next week, hopefully before that meeting, and we'll have an update for the people at that point. Things are going pretty smooth. There's no real pickups or bumps at this point, Peter Oleszak's been doing a good job with it. Dump and maintaining that. Did we ever find a part-time person up there? I know what, I'd heard that you've had applicants, but you weren't?
We have not moved forward with hiring yet.
Okay.
I hope to get the supervisor this week. I've had the new plan, can do this a little better going forward. I'll hopefully have something for the board for next week.
Thank you. And as far as the highway committee, we've had an incident with one of our trucks. There were no injuries fortunately, and the truck is at K and K for collision estimates and repair on it. Hopefully be covered by insurance. Again, there were no injuries, no, no further problems with that. Hopefully we'll find out why and keep them happening again. But, and again, Fred's approached us for the culverts and other things, keeping things going. If there's anything more, we'll bring it forward.
Well, the comprehensive plan committee saw that tonight. We are, after two years, almost finished, so we will be voting on that hopefully the 20th. And everything else is a little bit quiet right now. Hopefully more to report in May and June.
Sewer, you heard earlier, the status of the sewer system. Parks, if you notice, along Dump Road, there was a joint effort with our garden club, our parks department, our highway department, in moving some boulders and getting some trees dug up and planted and making that area look infinitely better than it did before. So thanks to all involved, thank you Judy. You were the mover and the shaker, and thank you, it looks great. We have our walkthrough with Orta coming up this Wednesday, so we're gonna do the walkthrough, the handover with our parks department. Orta allowed us to get into the new timing, their new timing shack, our new snack shack for the upper ball field, and start to clean that up and get it ready to cook some hot dogs and serve some hot dogs and goodies out of that and use for our youth program. You know, Pete's, if you haven't seen the fields yet, Pete's done a great job getting those ready. Kickball happened this past weekend during the pouring rain, so we've already had events that have gone off and taken place, and our parks are alive and well.
And to jump on that, just Pete and the school are also doing next Thursday, we're doing the cleanup in the park. So, yes, it's the third, third annual? We were trying to?
Third annual, I think that's what we're calling it. It's two days actually, so on the 14th, we will have fifth, fourth of fifth and sixth grader. We'll be working on specific projects in the afternoon with my staff, with our cemetery volunteers. And then on the 15th, that'll be the bigger of the two days, basically nine to about 12:30. And we'll be working at Keable Forest Riverfront Park, looking along the trail. That'll be a little bit this year, gonna be pulling in some of the other community groups to help out Judy, the parks market folks. It's a great opportunity for the kids to come, put a little sweat equity into the park and give them a sense of sort of ownership of the park. And I know we've only been doing this for the last few years, but I feel like that's one of the keys to why we don't have more vandalism, why we don't have more issues with, you know, things going on in the park. They understand the value, they care for it, they wanna make it nice.
It's an awesome day, really, it's so much fun. I am excited, I'm not painting this year, and I'm mulching, so they, I don't know if it's a downgrade or an upgrade, but I'm excited, it's a really, really fun day, and the kids love it, so thank you for putting that on Pete.
And just mentioned, so we work hard, but then we do meet up?
We do get pizza, and we do get games.
We meet the school and the rest of the department, we do supply lunch, and then stewards donate ice cream lunches.
Yes.
So they will get rewarded for their hard work.
Little bit left for the teachers.
Awesome.
Colonel?
Town of Johnsburg Senior Committee. April 23rd, we had our, we had our Town of Johnsburg Senior Day. We had, we had a resounding success that day. I don't know however better to say it than that. It was very well received for all the folks who attended. There were a lot of ideas that were exchanged, a lot of new, a lot of new input. And the next step that we have is consolidating some of the, some of the input that was given to us, and that will be started. us, and that will be starting, starting, we'll be starting that process at a meeting tomorrow morning. We'll be meeting at 10 o'clock here at Tannery Pond. And I would really like to thank all the volunteers and all the people who worked in order to make this such a, such a successful day. And I don't know if maybe, I don't like to put Art, Art Webb on the spot, but I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
I do. I have pictures here of everyone, of the umpire of the day.
That's a great photo.
And you might not believe this, but Arnold has a great sense of humor. So he had a umpire chest mask and a face mask, and he did a whole thing, like, you know, picking him up at the ball game, and he said, play ball, and that's how the evening morning started. So for those who like this, that is actually Arnold in that picture. So thank you, Arnold.
Awesome, thank you. Privilege of the floor. If you'd like to come down or have something to say, please come down and come on over. It's all good, Kelly.
I think the reason I always have something to say is that I all of a sudden think of things as the meeting's going on. I've got kind of four comments, talking about occupancy tax. You mentioned Roost in Essex County, doing all of this stuff, and I, it occurred to me that this effort to reach out to Chestertown and Huracan as the northern part of Warren County is an effort to become a similar type of marketing approach for our area. I always felt that Warren County completely disregarded us up here, even though we have a huge number of people that come into the whole county every winter to ski, and in the summer to do the rev rail and all that stuff, and I don't think they, they know we exist. And so this joining of these three towns in an effort to market ourselves perhaps as a, an entity or a portion of Warren County, I think it's a good idea. Whether it turns out to be a good idea, I don't know, but it just seems like a good And I have to tip my hat to Drew Capabianca over in Huracan, the owner of the hub, which is a mountain biking thing there, because that idea came basically from him. He and I talked about that seven or eight years ago, and then Anna picked it up, and that's been wonderful. Kudos to Anna. $71,000 left, well, at least it's left for a while, I don't know if it's a total amount for the year, but anyway. Two things to say. You were talking about events and sustaining events, which is excellent idea, and, and supporting new, new events, which is crucial to something trying to get off the ground. Marketing is huge, it's never really been done sufficiently in this town, and I think marketing money or occupancy tax money going into marketing is a super idea, and should be done with probably more than everything else. And I do say, though, that there might be a category for, you know, one item in each of the categories of tourist infrastructure, such as kiosks or signs or maps or whatever, and of course, that may be considered part of marketing, I don't know, and beautification, because if we don't have a beautiful town, no, let's put it this way, if our town is beautiful, people remember that. Say, oh, let's go to North Creek, or let's go here, you know, it's beautiful there in the summertime, they do such a nice job with their flowers, or whatever, and I know that. Okay, moving on. This deal with the sewer thing, and looking for parking, how about considering having a shuttle service to get people from here to there, wherever they have to park their cars? I mean, maybe they have to park over in the park, maybe they have to park somewhere up Main Street, the schoolyard, or what, how about we have shuttle run? I don't know if that can be arranged, but might be possible. Can't even read my own writing here. Okay, okay, another concern I have, and that is the comment that we're not having lifeguards for our pond, they're going to be the lifeguard counselors in the swim program, which is fine. I am very concerned, and I have expressed this to Peter several times, that we do not offer our beach to, for people if they want to go in to swim. I'm not sure we have to have a lifeguard, I know that DEC doesn't have lifeguards at all their, all their camp sites anymore, and basically, it's a swim-at-your-own-risk thing, and I would like the town to consider that. And the other thing I really want considered is the fact that if you're gonna have a pond, you have to maintain it, and we do not maintain this pond regularly or well. We do not have a system to maintain it. It was never put in when the pond was built back in 2000. They turned down the expenditure of about $15,000 for putting away in to empty the pond so it can get cleaned out, because it was $15,000, which is, in my mind, ridiculous, because now you go along for another 20 years, and every year it's a problem, and if it had been done right in the beginning, we wouldn't have that problem. We need to figure out a system that works so that the pond can be drained, and either the plant's frozen over winter, which would mean there'd be totally no water in there in the winter, or it gets dug out. Not every year, every two to three years it has to be done. If it doesn't get done, it's gonna get weedy like that pug hole up there by the B and B, whatever that is, Goose, the goose one. What's the goose? The white goose? What is it? Stew pond, okay, which becomes nothing but a weed fest, looks ugly as all get out. We don't want that to happen to that pond. That is our entryway into North Creek. You come down off that hill, and given that the trees aren't grown too tall, you see that pond, and it's really beautiful. You walk down there, and you look around, it's gorgeous. So I would advocate that we look at how we can find the monies to take care of that pond on a regular basis. If they're not budgeted this year, yeah, that's one more year gone, but at least we could start getting it done for the following year. I have a question about the winter, summer split with Orta, the use of the pond. I was always under the impression that it was November 1st to April 1st, but then I keep hearing, somebody told me that they were told that they couldn't get in there until May, so I was just wondering, was there a change made, or has this been something that just happened? Do you know?
I don't, I'll ask the question tomorrow.
Okay, I'm just curious. That's it. Thank you, Peter, for cleaning up the town.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the board for their resolution on the apology of the intrusion of the Town of Johnsburg Highway Committee onto private lands and acting like they owned the place. We were very concerned that they didn't even reach out to us before they had done so. And I had emailed all of you over the weekend and talked to Supervisor Bean about the damages that were done there. How do we progress through to those reimbursements of those damages? I'm sorry, it says a...
Yeah, this is, so this isn't a... Yeah.
Oh, hey, sorry, sorry, Bob, Brian Donahue.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is privilege of the floor, so it's not a question any time, so we can't...
No, I understand, but it wasn't addressed, and I was understanding it would be addressed. So this is kind of my venue to put it into the minutes, because it is something that we need to have attention to. Trespassing and violating somebody who's very vulnerable due to age and their emotional situation, because they're in a grieving situation, is very predatory by the town highway. And I'm very concerned about this situation happening to another person based upon somebody of favor asking it to be done. I've asked the Town of Johnsburg Highway Commissioner to fix the road multiple times at John, Wilbur Hitchcock Road, and nothing has been done other than putting some gravel down when all he needed to do was rake it. I apologize for raining on your kumbaya moments here, but this was a pretty serious infraction of our private rights. That's what I have to say, thank you.
Judy?
I'm Judy Brown, and I'm a volunteer of the town, and I own Garnet Studio. So one of the things that we talk about is communication in our town, and one of the things we, we talk about is communication in our town, and it was, we had a chamber of commerce at one point, and then we lost our chamber, and then we had the business alliance. We don't have either of those things. I think we need to consider going back to a chamber of commerce, and the reason for that is that people will pay to be in a chamber. Then you have money for the communication things, there's, there's a hub to communicate with the town, with the people, with the businesses, with everything, and it just seems like we need to, we need to revisit that, we need to think about getting a chamber back.
So Judy, one of the conversations that has come out of the branding initiative is that there is a chamber in North Warren, and since we are working with them, and they have that structure, could there be something that comes out of that, with us working with them, strength in numbers, instead of reinventing the wheel ourselves?
I think that would be fine, but we need, we need something here in this community. We can't go to Chestertown for our chamber.
So there, that, I just want to let you know, that conversation is definitely happening, and it's happening with the CDC, and it's also happening at that level as well.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Privilege of the floor. Going once, going twice, Kelly, you can't go on the third time. So I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.